Good morning, everybody. Sean, it's 12 noon, rise in time. Welcome to the city council work session for our budget. Today we have Public Works Director Nemechek. If you'd like to walk us through your budget and maybe introduce your staff.
Vicky Nemechek, Public Works. Yes, I'd like, I'd very much like to start by introducing the staff. This is the hardest working group of people sitting, which I made them sit over here. They were all trying to hide over there in the corner. But the hardest working group of people that you will never see in the city. They don't like to make themselves known, but they're very hardworking. And if I could ask each one of you to come to the podium and introduce yourself and give your division, I would appreciate it. I'll start, but while you do that, Craig, if you'd introduce yourself.
I'm Craig Lavoy. I'm the Deputy Public Works Director and Solid Waste Administration. So I'm a little bit more detailed over the transfer station collections in the landfill. And then I do also oversee the fleet maintenance a little bit, but not as much of that one. But I do help a lot as the direct manager.
Renee Jordan Transit.
Bill Gonzalez, Street Nally.
Steven Gare, Facilities Manager.
Brian Bell, Fleet Maintenance Manager.
Sam Cotterini, Landfill and Compost.
Monier Flores, Operations Manager.
Dennis Fanning, Traffic Operations.
Bill Bartel, Staff Engineer.
So we will be starting with the budget on page 108, Public Works Administration. This is the general fund portion of the budget. This is probably our smallest portion, smallest portion, not necessarily money wise, but it does pay for payroll for the majority of the group, not all, but it does pay for payroll. And then just a small amount of other items. So we'll start on page 108. Significant changes just in Public Works, which is, we call Public Works Admin. It's just a small group of people, including myself, Mr. Lavoy, which he's paid out of a different fund. Ms. Flores, which is partially paid out of a different fund. Ms. Bartel, which is paid out of a different fund. And, and what else? Is that everybody? Okay, so the payroll is just myself and a portion of Ms. Flores as the Operations Manager. There's not any big changes here. It's primarily payroll and our needs come out of other funds, solid waste, 1%, those types of things. So we'll, unless there are any questions, I'll move on to traffic.
Hey, we have Councilman Johnson, Councilman Seagrave, and Councilman Rennie and Zoom, Councilman White. So any questions on administration? Okay, next.
To page 110, Traffic Division. Again, just small increases, payroll, light fuel and power, fleet cost. Those are going to, you're going to see those across all of our divisions, increases in those areas. First, let me thank you for the COLA that was received this last January and will continue into this next year. Very much appreciated and it helps us to hire the people that we need to do the job. So in the Traffic Division, it's primarily payroll, just a few small items, no major changes. Unless somebody has some questions, we'll move on to the next two facilities.
Okay, Dr. Aldrich.
Thank you, Chairman Escobal. I was just curious, is the traffic engineer, does that normally come out of this budget or does it come out of engineering?
Through you, Chair, it comes out of engineering.
Okay, even though all the other traffic.
This is traffic. We are only maintenance. The Public Works, the difference between engineering and maintenance, I like to say is engineering decides what to do and we do it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next.
Facilities Maintenance. The, again, I'd like to mention that we are fully staffed in Facilities Maintenance for the first time in a long time. So we have five people and we're very happy to have them. We just hired our last one last month. And the biggest change you'll see here is the $724,200 on page 113, which is for HVAC equipment. The, that is one-time money that we requested. It is to pay for HVAC equipment at the Depot, Fire Training Academy, ICE and Event Center, Pioneer Park Civic Center and Municipal Building, a one-time expenditure. And that's because this HVAC equipment runs with R22 refrigerant. R22 refrigerant is no longer made and it's, we have to buy it from a reclaimed facility and it's getting more and more expensive every year. These are, have either met or exceeded their lifetime, their lifespan, expected lifespan. So we need to replace this equipment and we were lucky enough to get the one-time funds to do this. We will include this in our HVAC contract, which will be coming up for renewal here soon. The contract is expected to start one July.
Any questions on facilities? Councilman Leiborn.
So I'm assuming that all of these various facilities and their HVAC systems are coming from one source or are they all, I mean, I know there are differences in the buildings. Are there differences in who you're, are there different purchases or are you purchasing them from one source?
Our HVAC contractor will make those purchases in the, in their bids. They're required to provide us with information about how the exchange will work, how long the, the equip, other equipment may be down. They'll be required to remove the old equipment. We have some specifics in the contract that will, that give them guidance on how we would like that replaced and in what order and what the timeframe is.
Thank you. Dr. Aldrich.
Thank you, Chairman Escobal. I'm just curious, what is local meeting expense, the $1,000 that you have designated there under contractual services?
Through you, Chair, that is money that we set aside for if someone has to go to weed spraying classes or those kinds of things.
Versus professional development?
Well, I'm not sure that we've used that recently. We used to pay that. I believe we used to pay that when they attended local or, and sometimes they would go out of town to Casper. I don't think we've used that recently, but if they now, if they went to a class, it would be paid out of professional development since they, we've done some. The treasurer has asked us to pay certain things out of certain accounts.
I'm just noticing so far, and maybe this will change as we get further back here, but I don't see line items for professional development except for facilities for any of your other divisions so far. So are we just not, there's no professional development that we offer to those, to the individuals in those in administration or in Traffic Division at this point?
Through you, Chair, we pay for some professional development in, from other funds. For example, if Mr. Lavoy attends training, he's paid, we paid for that through solid waste professional development. If the landfill manager goes to something, again, professional development for solid waste. If Monier would go to some, something, it would likely be paid through, through 1% funds. Same for myself, when I have to travel for professional development, it would be paid normally by 1% funds.
Thank you.
Do we have any hands raised? Okay, Director, next.
Street and Alley. On page 114, Street and Alley, we are able to add Heavy Equipment Operator. That was, we will be back to 25, which was what we were at for employees prior to the riff. The last riff brought us down to 23. We were able to get another employee added. And then this is the last one to get us back to that 25 point. So we're very grateful for that. We also have included in there, we hire our Street and Alley Heavy Equipment Operators. We actually hire them as a utility worker, truck driver. And then once they have completed their one-year probation, they're able to plow, operate loaders, do the basics. We give them a small raise and move them up to Heavy Equipment Operator. So those are the increases. Right now we have four who will definitely be eligible for that within the next year and then four vacant positions. So we could have up to eight that would be, that would qualify for those, for that increase. We also added here a CDL. That is a professional development line item that we've added money to so that we can, we have trained one. And I believe we have hired or working on hiring one additional that is going to go through the CDL training. So that is the line item that will pay that CDL training out to LCCC. I did, there is a, a, we've reduced the amount in the fleet fuel labor and parts inventory and that's based on historical usage, but I would say if we were able to be fully staffed, we may exceed that number. But I don't expect that we'll be fully staffed in the very near future. We're about, we'll expect to be by the end of the fiscal year, six short in Street and Alley, six people short.
Any questions on Street and Alley? Hands raised. Okay, next.
We will move to, I believe Transit is next. Yes, Transit on page 210. The revenue, obviously, our request to the county at the top, our FTA grant is going, we are requesting $782,946 more than we did in FY '23. And we are reducing the amount of money that we estimate on program income since we're going to be giving free rides on the routes. We have increased the one-time funds that were from 100,000 to 400,000 and that's so that we can have money to match the new buses that we intend to buy and which I'll talk about in the expenditure portion.
Any questions on the Transit Fund? Okay, next.
And the expenditures for Transit start on page 211. Nothing huge on that page. If you get to page 212, which is the capital, that's where the buses are shown. We are asking for in the proposed budget $786,440 more for a total of $1,116,440. That is our estimated cost of three small vans and three route buses to replace current buses. Of course, those are 8515, so we, the match is 15% of, we can use county, city, state funds to match federal funds. But, but the, the match is federal 85, match is required is at 15. Other capital assets that we purchased, the building, we have the 1800 Westland Road that we're working on that we currently own and we're working on a plan for what that's going to look like. That's, that will be matched at 8020, so 80% federal, 20% of match money. That really is the big change is the, is the amount of buses that we're going to buy and that's so that we can get our, our routes up and going. We don't expect to have those buses in, even if we order them today until fiscal year '25.
And Dr. Aldrich.
Chairman Escobal, through you. Vicky, what is the fuel supply that these buses are going to use or have you even spec'd these out yet?
We have a spec in the works that is a basic spec. It'll be gas.
A diesel or?
No, we.
Just gas, okay. Have we looked at what it would cost for a natural gas or an alternative fuel supply?
We've used natural gas in the past. It's, it's been in the long past. But my understanding is, is that the time it takes to refuel and the amount of time that you send, the buses are on the road, doesn't lend itself to easily making those routes. We'd have to have more buses, a lot more buses in order to do that. We, we are in the TDP looking at electric, but there's a lot of infrastructure to be had that it, that is a plan in the, in the future and it is part of our Transit Development Plan.
Is there any funding available through grant funding for hybrids at this point?
Or hybrids? Let me ask Renee if she's aware of that.
There is funding, there are grants for that, but we still need the match and they're way more expensive than what we're looking at for gas. And that is why we haven't looked at something different. Plus, as Vicky said, the infrastructure to be able to power those would be a lot more than what we're requesting now. So it is in the future where we can budget for it, but right now we're not just because of the cost.
Thank you.
You have any hands raised? Councilman White.
Thank you, Chairman Escobal. Vicky, two questions for you. And I think you've answered these at Finance Committee in the past, but one is what is the shelf life for the buses that we purchase? I.e., like how long do they usually last? And then second, what is the individual cost for one of those buses? We have the $786,000 budgeted, but what, how much does one of those buses cost?
Through you, Chair. The first I'll answer, the small buses last five years. The large route buses last seven years. The cost, our estimated cost for replacing the small vans are, let's see, approximately 120,000, 120, 558 dollars each. And then the three route buses, we expect to cost approximately $278,000 each.
Thank you. And I'm sure, just through you, Mr. Chair, one other question. I'm sure like everything else, you've seen those costs increase over the last couple of years due to inflation.
Through you, Chair, absolutely. But, but worse than that is availability.
Thank you.
Councilman Aldrich.
Chairman Escobal, through you. Are all of these, I'm assuming that all of these will be accessible, correct? The vans, the smaller vans as well as the buses?
Through you, Chair, absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other hands? Okay, Director, next.
That completes the Transit and we will move to 1% sales tax on page 222. The 1% sales tax, this is, this will be the first year of the new tax, the 2023 through 2026. We start collecting it, started collecting it in January and we'll start spending it in July. The, we did increase the estimate of the tax collection because there was a significant overage this last four years. So we increased from 40,500,000, which was the estimate, 42,500,000, which was the estimate, the last four-year tax to $50 million for the four-year tax. So that does, that accounts for the proposed budget of $12,500,000 each year with a small, with about, about a half a million dollars that will be used from reserves to pay for the administration costs that aren't covered by the resolution. So we did set the, you'll see in, in the revenue that there's a small decrease, well, about a quarter of a million dollar decrease in the amount of money that we'll have to transfer from reserves. And that's due to an increase in the administration portion of the tax. We did have $2.2 million set aside for the administration of the tax, which is $550,000 a year. We've increased that starting this year, starting in FY '24 to 3 million, which will be $750,000 to pay for administration. Now, the administration portion is the first portion that you'll see when it starts expenditures on page 222. It pays for all of our inspectors, our construction manager and all of their costs, vehicles, equipment, anything that they might need in order to, to do what they do. Do the contracts, get our contracts ready to go out for bid and those kinds of things. So small, you know, nothing major here. In fact, it's, it's dropped just a small amount, $29,000 over or actually the total division dropped just under $7,000. It's basically the same, the same budget as it was last year with a few changes here and there. I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any specifics they'd like to talk about on the administration portion.
Do we have any hands raised? No? Okay, Director, next.
The next is the Fire Department on page 224. That's what we call the 2612 Budget. That's the number that it's assigned to there. If you'll see the total division, 2612, the previous year was 308,250 dollars and in fiscal year '24, it will be $500,000, which is a, a change of $191,750. Okay, I'll move on to the Police Department, 2613. Again, if you go to the bottom of the total division is 20, for 2613, last year was 541,250 dollars. It has increased to $625,000. Again, all based on the increase in the estimate of what we're going to collect. So that's a difference for the Police Department of $83,750.
Any questions on Division 2613?
Community Recreation and Events, Division 2614. It was, it used to be split up into two sections. We have in this tax combined it into one, it was ride of way and community rec and events facilities. And we just put it all into one. It's easier to manage that way. So they have gone from, in fiscal year '23, from $493,250 a year to, for FY '24 to 593,750, which is a $100,500 increase, which is on page 225. Total Division 2614.
Any questions on 2614?
2615, which is the miscellaneous area of the tax. There's a, the one thing that is decreasing is the amount of money that's going into the equipment, capital equipment line item, which is that first line under other projects. The one, it was 179, 179,250 dollars decreasing to 125,000. Just when we went through everything, I think this was just the area that we wanted to make sure everybody else was funded appropriately. And this was a kind of a, this is a miscellaneous area that pays for new computers each year. There's an allocation for computers. There's an allocation for some things like Alert Media, which is the software that alerts people when there's a snow day or something that happens in the city that we want to alert everybody quickly. There, it pays for different things. And then we also, once a year, we ask all of the divisions that are not eligible for 1% such as fleet, facilities, youth alternatives, some of those places, we ask all of them if they would like to submit a request for equipment or software or those types of things and they can all submit. We put those things all in a, on a spreadsheet and we fund, we, the mayor funds as much as he can, basically.
Dr. Aldrich.
Chairman Escobal, through you. So, Vicky, my understanding is, when you mentioned the computers and things, is that recently we've discovered that Open Gov is not going to work with anything except Apple products. So are all the Apple computers for each division or department coming out of those budgets? Or are some of those going to be coming out of this 1% miscellaneous?
The IT Department asks, we fund each year $50,000 out of this, what will be 125,000. Plus, we have some overage money also that was allocated at, for the end of the last tax. They could make a request for those funds. And they, these are basically replacement computers. So if we needed to replace what we have with Apple computers, these funds would be eligible for that if that's what IT asked and the mayor approved.
Thank you.
Director Fountain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for some quick clarification, for the Building Department, Planning Department, Engineering, the folks that have to do the field work will have to have the iPads and the iPhones in order for them to be able to communicate back and forth and able to permit and give out those permits on site. So that's really why we're moving in that direction. Open Gov does require that particular product in order to meet that formatting. But for the folks internally, such as the Clerk's Office and/or perhaps the Treasury, they would not have to have that.
Thank you.
Do you have any further questions on Division 2615? Okay, next.
Okay, and I will mention also on 2615 that we, City County Health did see an increase in their funds. They went from 70,500 to 83,750. And Animal Control went from, this is basically where this money goes to compliance for equipment, for trucks. They went from $22,500 a year to $62,500 a year. So that, that is all of 2615. In 2616, which is labeled Street and Alley, it's, includes the money that goes to Street and Alley for things like snow removal. So that would be asphalt that you put in potholes. It would be asphalt that they use for patching. It would be equipment that we replaced, snow plows or blades or rollers or anything that the Street and Alley Department skitters, those types of things. That would all be a part of this. They have a portion, which is, Street and Alley has $5 million per the, for the four years, which is 1.25 million for the, for, for one year. Just salt is about $400,000 a year, the ice slicer that we use each year. So that shows you how, what kind of a budget we, we have here to work with. Out of here also is payment management. That's a $20 million over a four-year period, $5 million a year. Projects, specific projects, $5 million a year for the four years, 1.25 million for the, for each year. Traffic receives 3 million or $750,000 per year. And drainage, there's $4 million for the four-year period or $1 million a year. So that's the, that is the, 2616 is, and 2617 and 2618 are the three pieces that make the, up the 80% of the 1% budget. So 80% is set aside for 2616, 17, which is traffic, 18, which is drainage. So in Street and Alley, no big changes here. This, like I said, doesn't pay for any payroll or anything like that out of this portion of the tax. It's all asphalt, ice slicer, equipment. It's all, uh, asphalt, ice slicer, equipment, all the things that we need to do our job, aggregates. I'm happy to answer any questions there, if anybody would like, if anybody has any.
I don't see any hands raised, so we'll go to the next division.
Okay, twenty six seventeen is traffic, again, part of the twenty percent. Um, no, uh, big changes here. We are going to, uh, the equipment went up by a hundred thousand dollars. That's to buy a small, um, palletized paint system that'll go on the back, back of a truck, if I'm not mistaken. Yes. Yes, okay. And that's, and then drainage is, uh, went up significantly, uh, from five hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to a million dollars a year. Uh, felt this was, we all felt that this was a, uh, area that needed more funds. So we did, uh, add to those funds in this next four-year period. And that is all I have to say about one percent sales tax, unless there are any questions.
Let's move on then.
Internal Service Fund, Fleet Maintenance on page two thirty eight. On revenue, I, uh, will say that we have, uh, projected an eight percent increase in fuel and a five percent increase in parts. So that really accounts for the increase in, in our revenue front that we will, of course, charge back to the people who use our services. On page two thirty nine, the, we are removing the CDL trainer. We were funded for a CDL trainer to, uh, possibly hire a full-time trainer instead. We've, uh, worked with L triple C for, um, and the council's approved the agreement and, and it's working very well. So we're going to remove that CDL trainer, uh, from the budget. And in, we'll, you'll see an increase in professional development there. Again, uh, our fleet, uh, need, require CDLs as well. So, um, that we've, uh, put in eight thousand dollars in order to train our, and train our, we have some lube, new lube technicians that we've hired that we would like to train, um, eventually, uh, with CDLs.
Dr. Aldrich.
Chairman Escobal through you. Um, Vicky, I'm just curious, with the professional development, um, I know that you said that that's, uh, for CDLs, does that also include, when I visited with, um, that department, um, there were several people who had had ASE licenses that, um, those have not been continued on just because of budget cuts and things like that, or, um, things that were outside of their control. But, um, and I watched two gentlemen who were reading a Chilton manual, um, which is, you know, the standard, gold standard in, uh, auto repair. But, um, auto, I mean, auto repair is not what auto repair used to be. I mean, now it's almost like you have to have a computer science background because of the modules and things that are in those. Are we making sure and have we included in this line item enough money for professional development to make sure that our, um, mechanics are getting the training they need to be able to work on the vehicles that we're getting that aren't your mom and dad's vehicle anymore? And they're not, I mean, they're not putting out Chilton manuals necessarily for the brand-new vehicles, so.
Through you, Chair, um, yes, Dr. Aldrich, what we have done is we are, um, we're trying to get people to do ASE certifications. Um, we also get, well, what we've done to do that is provide a certification pay. If they obtain, uh, an ASE certification, and there are many, we have a plan that's all spelled out and approved by HR. If they get those ASE certifications and maintain them, they receive a pay, an additional pay, um, each month. So anywhere from, is it fifty dollars to a hundred? Okay, so eat, and there's how many levels? Up to three levels. So we are incentivizing that. We just put that into effect, uh, a few months ago and, uh, have made sure that they all know about it. We also, um, when we buy vehicles or equipment, we require that they provide training onsite to the, to people, to our mechanics, so that they can, they can work on them. And we require in the, in the bid that, uh, in the specs, that they provide, uh, computer generated, uh,
Diagnostic maintenance.
Exactly. So all of those things.
Great, thank you.
Do we have any hands raised, Jen? And Director?
Okay, and let me see, we have, uh, on page two forty, the capital improvements, um, you'll see the nine hundred and forty five thousand, which was not in there before, is, uh, we need to do something to our parking lot. The area around Fleet Maintenance and the area around, uh, um, fuel areas over at Fleet on Happy Jack Road are falling apart. And they, we are in, when you approved last night, the Public Works Improvement, item that was design, uh, that included design for that parking lot. And we are gathering money to, uh, actually do the construction as well. So that's what that is.
Okay, we'll move on to Enterprise Funds.
Enterprise Funds, solid waste. On page two forty-two, revenue, uh, not a lot of changes here. Um, the biggest change really is in interest because, uh, they're actually paying some interest now. So, um, the addition of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars and, but then we also are showing a decrease in investments because the market has dropped. So, um, pluses and minuses. We've added the, in, under miscellaneous, we've added the Rim pasture grazing lease. So that'll show, give us a little bit more, um, revenue, but not a lot, but a little bit. And that's, I think that's, the Solid Waste Fund is basically, we have a twenty million dollar budget. We have a twenty million dollar revenue stream. So I'll move on to expenditures unless.
Do we have any questions on Solid Waste Fund? Okay, next.
Okay, on page two forty-three, just looking at expenditures. Again, we've, uh, added some fifteen thousand dollars for CDL training. We've had, we've, I think we've trained one out there so far, and we're looking at one additional, but we haven't gotten that one going yet. Um, we've got an additional ten thousand dollars doing more advertising. We just started a radio campaign last month. And that's all on that page, on page two forty-four. Under capital, we have an additional twenty five thousand dollars under equipment. Uh, that's basically containers, lids, and dumpsters, just replacing those. And improvements, um, again, the Public Works Improvement project will include replacing of some concrete out at the transfer station. And that it, that is, uh, partially the four hundred and twenty five thousand dollar increase. And we are replacing the lift station out at the, uh, transfer station as well. So that's, those are the improvements that we plan for this year. Um, when you go down to the bottom, the equipment replacement, the contractual services, June is our last payment of our leases. So we have paid off everything, we will have in June paid off all of our leases and everything will be purchased on a cash basis. Congratulations, and our, thank you. That was a lot of work. Um, page two forty-five.
Uh, real quick, I had a question on the advertising. We've seen the commercial where people are putting their refuse container right next to there's, so recycle container doesn't let the truck get in between them. Uh, what are their future advertising plans do you have for that program?
We're, uh, including on our media campaigns, the, um, that we're hiring for CDLs, that's part of our advertising campaign. We're, um, we're doing things like, we want to make sure that people know that their trash has to be bagged, that the recycle can't be bagged. We're trying to do contamination, um, uh, commercials showing what is contamination in, uh, yard waste, for example, that it's just grass leaves and small twigs or small branches in the container itself. Anything else has to be outside. There's what, hmm, trying to think of what all there is. Those are the. Okay, we'll have, and that was not out yet, is it? The compost? Yeah, we've done it commercial for, for yard waste, but that one is, uh, not quite out yet, but it should be very soon.
And just to follow up, well, when the general public hears the word contamination, they, they're probably thinking of something completely different of what we're thinking of when we talk about solid waste or recycling. Uh, so I don't know if we could come up with something that's a little bit more mainstream, for the public to understand exactly what we want and expect of them. So, okay, we'll move on. Okay, Dr. Aldrich, sorry.
Chairman Escobal, yeah, through you. I'm just curious, what are, um, advertising, uh, media, uh, outlets that we're using?
Uh, through you, Chair, right now, we're using commercials, TV commercials. We're using, uh, media releases that go to, to everybody. And, um, then we're, we have stuff on our website. We have, um, and then we're using the radio.
So we haven't included any social media and we haven't included, for instance, like the advertisements that they do at the movie theaters?
We have it, we do have the app that has all kinds of information on it. If we, the Recycle Coach app is, um, everything you want to know about recycling is on that app. And it will give you reminders of when your trash, uh, is goes out and, uh, is, uh, scheduled to be taken out, when you're, we're scheduled to pick up your, uh, yard waste, when we're scheduled to pick up your recycle, all of those things. It will, it will do all kinds of things for you if you download it. Um, I know I use it and it is, it's very informative. It will tell you what you can put in the container and what you can't. We have the, we've added magnets to the side of our trucks that show, uh, yard waste, um, with, what trucks are yard waste and what trucks are recycled, so that they can tell them from the trash trucks. Because we've had people that in the past thought that we were dumping their recyclables into the trash, but in fact, the truck, trucks are all the same, so, so you can't tell them apart. So we've added magnets to those trucks so that big magnets on the side so that they can tell what kind of trucks those are. It's hard to get the word out to people when they call and say, well, I didn't know. And you say, I put, you know, it's on TV, it's on the news, it's on, um, radio, it's in the newspaper, it's on, oh, we're using the newspaper also, we pay for ads in the newspaper. Um, it's, we put it out, it's on the website, we have an app. We do everything we can think of to get, we have a bar, a little QR code that we're now sticking on the underside of the, um, lids. I don't, I, I'm kind of at a loss of, when people say they don't know how, I don't know how to reach them, except to go door-to-door, and I don't have that time.
I don't even know if that would be effective, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
I, I think it is becoming a challenge because, you know, back in the day when we had two newspapers in town and we had primarily one radio station or one family and one TV station, and everybody utilized those, that wa-, it was much easier to get the word out, but there are so many options now. Um, I'm just, sometimes some of the, um, media outlets that you just named are so costly compared to social media. Um, I'm just wondering about, and if we could drive everybody to the Recycling Coach app, um, I think that would be helpful. But I think it's a matter of getting the word out, and I don't know, you know.
We end every media release with, you can find out more information at, by downloading Recycle Coach. But it, it is, it's difficult. It is definitely a challenge. I hear, I hear that so often. If, if, uh, we close down for training for a couple of hours and I listened for a half an hour to a woman who told me that she didn't know. And I said, I, I don't know how else to get it to you besides walking to your door and knocking on it and telling you that we're going to be closed for a couple hours. I just don't.
Well, you, you brought up a good point there, Dr. Aldrich. And I'm thinking that there's other ways, like, we could get out some word by putting those PSAs on Fridays on the Plaza, between bands, where someone comes out, you got big crowds there. Uh, we got a nice PA system now to blast it out to people that are downtown, uh, during those big events. So, uh, maybe we could use one of those, which wouldn't cost us a lot of money as well. Okay, well, do we have any other hands raised on this? Okay, we'll move on.
Okay, um, I think I was on page two forty-five. Not a lot of changes here. Um, our professional services are just, are going up a little bit. He waste, household hazardous waste, single stream recycling, all those, um, contracts are, uh, you know, creep up over the years there. We're now estimating three hundred and seventy thousand dollars to, uh, continue those programs at no cost to the residents of the City of Cheyenne. Um, besides their regular weekly or monthly fees. The, we've added a rental, which is porta potty at the compost, um, and added a maintenance, uh, line item for miscellaneous repairs, just for things that we need to do that have to get paid for. Um, the capital improvements, we are not planning any. We just recently did the, uh, upgraded the trailer. So there's a new compost trailer out there. It was badly in need of it, and they are very happy with their new trailer. So if you haven't been out there to look, look at it, it's, uh, it's quite nice. And then, of course, they work Sundays, uh, we continue with the overtime. On Sundays, they are, uh, they work four hours. So the compost facility is open four hours on, on Sundays. Landfill on page two forty-six. We, our professional services, again, are, uh, expensive and they tend to go up. Um, we have envi-, on professional services under the landfill, we have environmental monitoring, surveying, uh, leachate, uh, which is the liquid that comes off the garbage at the landfill. Um, the ponds and the pumps require operation of maintenance money. We have air emissions that we have to report. Uh, and then as well, we do some, we do provide bottled water out there for our employees and uniforms, uh, that are cleaned weekly. I think, oh, the, a capital, under capital equipment on page two forty-seven, that's our big purchase this year is going to be a new D six dozer, which is, um, the six hundred and eighty thousand dollar increase. And we're also, uh, planning to purchase a three-quarter ton truck at the landfill. And then we move on to the Bellville Ranch, which is, starts in the middle of page two forty-seven. Again, not, uh, not a lot of changes there. Page two forty-eight. Overall, again, we have a revenue of twenty million dollars. We have expenditures of twenty million dollars in the solid waste fund, and that is all I have.
Any hands raised on solid waste fund or any other questions for Director Nemec? Uh, Director Nemec been asking Directors, what would be your, uh, top request for one-time funding that wasn't in the budget?
One-time funding? Our biggest request was filled with the seven hundred and twenty four thousand dollars for HVAC equipment. That was a big, uh, thing. I would say that, uh, we had this year in facilities, we are over our budget. We are now working in the red. But that's not, uh, I mean, that would be a one-time, maybe, emergency fund, if I were going to say anything. Um, we had, uh, eighty four thousand dollar, I think it was, um, sewer, uh, line that collapsed at Fleet Maintenance, and that was repaired under an emergency order. line that collapsed at Fleet Maintenance, and that was repaired under an emergency order. So it's difficult to foresee that type of thing happening. So if I were if I were going to say one thing, the emergency fund for facilities would probably be of one-time expenditure that we would ask for funding.
Okay, I guess that concludes us for Public Works, unless there's any final questions. I noticed we've got the mayor here today. Are we going to do your budget on Thursday? Is that the plan? Okay, see, there's no more questions. We are adjourned.